I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Step to the right, Chief. So parole call, we have two people out, Mr. Reed and Mr. Lito is on vacation. Okay, so the first thing is the first selectman's budget presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, woman. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm happy to present an overview of the budget as I proposed to the town council. First of all, before we start, I wanted to just take a moment and express my thanks to all the department heads and some of the boards and commissions that were involved in presenting their departmental budgets to me and providing their input. It was a different budget process this year. I was looking for things in a slightly different way, and we'll get into that a little bit. But there was a lot to it, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, and I appreciate all the department heads' input and their patience and their hard work on behalf of the town. So with that, let me get into a couple of things. First, the budget that the council that you have in your hard copy, and it is of course online as well, as will this presentation tomorrow morning. There are hard copies available here if anyone would like one. The budget book this year, once again, has evolved from prior years. My vision was to standardize this in a different way so that each department was fully contained within its own section, so that there wasn't a need to cross-reference different books in different sections. So each department now has a section with a standardized overview of the departmental functions, their organization chart, some performance metrics for that department where it's appropriate, some brief bullets on their accomplishments during the current fiscal year, goals and accomplishments in the future fiscal year 19 budget, and then any budget highlights. In the financial sections is the traditional expenditure summary, which you've all seen in the past. I've also added in here revenue summaries where appropriate. So if that department is directly engaged in generating revenue, that information is in that department's section as well. Not that we want you to think it in terms of it offsetting, because obviously revenue goes into one bucket and expenses into another, it's not intended to offset. But I think it's important to show that some of the costs of that department directly correlate to revenue that they generate. So those expenses, if you look to modify them in some way or short, way, shape, or form, may also impact the revenues that they generate. And last but not least is this budget includes the details of how each line item was built, something I specifically asked for the department heads and I appreciate. So you get to see the understanding and the thought process that went into each line item. So that said, as I went to prepare this, again, working with our department heads, these were my guiding principles. The overarching goal of this budget is to control our taxes here in Monroe. At the same time, we want to ensure that we're investing in our infrastructure. It's a fundamental responsibility of government, and we can't fail in that regard. We want to maintain the excellence in education that we've come to know and enjoy here in Monroe. At the same time, we want to also improve the customer service that we have. I also want to invest in the development and permitting process. I want to restore some of the service levels where it's possible and appropriate, particularly in the areas that we had to reduce dramatically last year with the mitigation of the state budget crisis, and finally, maintain the financial health of our town. So, the bottom line is this budget presents a 1.37% reduction in real estate taxes next fiscal year. The current projected mill rate would be reduced to 35.27. So how do we get there? First, it's through a conservative approach. We also have a decrease in debt service, we have some grant list growth, and a healthy fund balance. So let me go through this. First, on the conservative approach. You'll see the town side expenditures were, this is not going to work. Let's see here, here we go. Town side expenditures about of $28 million in our approved budget for fiscal year 18. The department submissions were north of $30 million, which would have represented a 7.43% increase in town side spending, just town side spending. Now, I want to be clear here, I'm not saying that the department heads did anything wrong, okay? They put their thought into what they viewed their department, what they viewed as things that they needed to discuss relative to their department. However, my job is to make sure that as we go through this, we're identifying not just what we need, but what we can afford and what's appropriate. So a lot of those items we discussed, and in many cases, working with that department head, have reduced. That brought us down to a budget that is pretty close to last year's 28.7 million, still an increase, an increase of just under 2% on the expenditure side. However, something I want to point out to you is that one thing that we did not do last year is we had no roads in our operating expense. We took everything out and it was all put into capital, something that we know as a town we don't want to do long term. We actually want to be more on a maintenance program of our roads and not have to have capital investments. So in this budget, I have, we have restored $450,000 of roads in our operating expense side. If you take that out of the equation, just to get a kind of a comparison to last year, a closer comparison to last year, that brings the increase up to less than 1%. And again, the total impact on the town, overall on the town, is a reduction in real estate taxes of just over 1%. So what are some of the key drivers? Again, I already mentioned roads, returning $450,000 to the roads. Insurance continues to be a driver, this is a conservative estimate, estimate of all of our insurance costs will increase about $194,000 on the expense side. On the permitting process, there is an increase there. This is my investment in our land use group. We have a position that is currently in the charter and on our books that is unfilled, called the Town Planner. I am seeking to restore funding to that position in the next fiscal year with the intent that that individual would inherit the oversight of the permitting process and ensuring the streamlining of the permitting process. We would be taking one of the positions that currently wears far too many hats and focus, allowing this position to assume the oversight of the process. They would also be in charge of the customer service experience, and being the person who is most intimate with the process, they would also be the one to implement future technology solutions that we're looking to leverage through our relationship with MetroCog and doing a regional project that will allow us to implement technology, to assist the permitting process, establish workflow management, et cetera. So a rather important role that I'm suggesting that we restore funding to. Again, funding was in several years back, and it had been removed several years ago. Police cars. We took all of the police car fleet replacement out of operating last year, and we funded it through the police special duty fund. We are going to return half of the fleet into operating, to the operating budget, and the other half would remain in the police special duty account. Another key driver in the right, in the lower direction is our debt service. You'll see our debt service number would come down, $268,000 this year. Finally, the driver of $125,000 by returning some of the appropriations that were removed in prior year. One is the EMS vehicle replacement program. We generally put money out of our operating budget every year into that fund so that after a certain number of years, we have enough to do a scheduled replacement of an ambulance. That was taken out last year, we want to put that back in. This is, we are coming up on our 10-year anniversary of the Plan of Conservation Development, so we need to buy under state statute, redo that, so we need to appropriate for that. And there is some funding in there for a compliance of something called MS4, which has to do with our stormwater compliance with the state of Connecticut. So other important notes for technology infrastructure, we have some needs out there. We've identified a $300,000 need. What we've done is remove that from the fiscal year 19 operating budget with the intent to fund that from appropriations this fiscal year. We have an ability in this current budget season, based on where we're coming out, that we can make that allocation this year and therefore not have to carry it in operating expense next year. That directly helps lower your tax rate. The MS4 compliance, as I mentioned, there is some that was restored to the operating budget, however, I'm looking to spread out that appropriation also to next year's budget so that allows us to reduce operating expenses by $50,000 this year. And last, but certainly not least, Board of Education. I just, I want to take a moment and just thank Superintendent Batista and Assistant Superintendent Jamery and Finance Director for Board of Ed, Gaby de Blasio, excuse me. The, we have a partnership with the Board of Education between the town side and the board side, and we've had great lines of communication and working together to do things for the benefit of the town overall. One of the things that I've done is I've put through a reduction of $135,000 to the Board of Ed budget. That is something that we talked about and collaborated on. We've identified a couple of items that we can fund through current capital reserves that were set aside for the Board of Education currently on the books, and we can accomplish that, which will allow us again to have that not hit or operating budget and again, lower the tax impact to our residents. So it's a reduction, but it has absolutely nothing to do with how we educate our children, it'll have no impact to the classroom. And the Board of Ed has said that they're comfortable with that plan. So I'm sorry this is hard to read, I want to talk a little bit about roads, because I know we've been talking about roads. This is a schedule that takes us from 2010, 11, all the way up to the current budget. The intent of this is just to show you that over the years, the total amount that we've budgeted and are spent has kind of fluctuated, but we're kind of in this range of $1.5 to $2 million. And what the intent of our budget this year is to continue to invest in our roads and infrastructure. We would basically be almost at the exact same number as we are in the current fiscal year if you combine the sources of funding, being operating expenses, bonding, and the town aid and roads grant. So at the end of the day, we feel comfortable that we will be able to continue to invest in our roads even though we are not fully restoring. At one point, the request was $1 million in our operating expense, as you see, I've reduced that down to $450,000. A little bit about customer service and restoration of services. Throughout the budget, as we know, there were various reductions that were done across the board last year. Some of the things that I'm looking to accomplish is to restore things where possible. Not everything can be restored, not everything can be restored fully, again, with the intent to be able to live within our means, but there are things we can do. So for example, this is not a complete list of everything, and as we go through our budget workshops, I know we'll talk about it further, but some examples. One, this budget does include opening the library up for half-days on Wednesday, get the library open again on Wednesdays. It restores the nutrition line to the senior center so that their lunch program can be resumed. It restores some of the marketing expenses for Economic Development Commission, and things like adding, not going from full-time, but adding some additional part-time hours to our building department in the front desk so that we can get better customer service experience, so that the building official can be out in the field more, and the more we have people there at the desk, the better we can serve our customers. Again, just some examples. I want to talk a little bit about our state grant assumptions, because I'm sure folks are saying, well, what about the state, what's happening this year? So fiscal year 17, this was our total grant for education cost sharing, just under 6.4 million. This current fiscal year, our original budget was, and then this, as I say, original budget, this is the original budget that was ultimately approved by the state legislature for this year. So we know that the governor originally came out with zeros, it went through a protracted process, this is where we ended up, $6 million. The state also introduced something called the Municipal Stabilization Grant, which was intended to offset some of the reductions. So really, at the end of the day, when you look at these two items together and we think about budgeting, and that brought us to six point, almost 6.2 million. Then as most of you know, Governor Malloy had the opportunity in this current year cycle, he had this opportunity early on in the process to do a holdback. I've been told by my, by my advisors at the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities and others that he does not, he can't do any further holdbacks, that's what I've been told. But he held back a total of $527,000, so it brought us to the 5.6 million that we have. So at the end of the day, we had about 11.6% reduction, or $744,000 in our grant. So what's the assumption for next year? Again, working off that base of the 5.6. If you look at our current approved budget by the state legislature, because they passed a two-year budget, the fiscal year 19 or the state year two budget has Monroe getting $6.1 million. Now, we all presume that that's not going to be the final number. As you know, Malloy came out with a budget of his own, which his number totals 5.1. Before we had the numbers released by Malloy, in working with the finance department, we came up with a proposed algorithm to reduce our assumptions based off the state legislature budget, which would reduce it 17.6% from what the legislature gave us. That brought us down to just over $5 million, which as you can see, is still below even what the governor has proposed. So we feel that there's comfort there. Again, in my conversations with our legislators, with our folks at CCM and at COST, we've been told that there appears to not be a whole lot of appetite in the legislature to do anything significant, certainly not anything more significant than the governor would propose. So we are hopeful that this is a good conservative assumption on the state grant. The current projection in our grant list is an $11 million increase from last year, that's on total net assessed value. The numbers do fluctuate. If you look at raw numbers currently, that number actually is a little bit higher, however, we have to take into account appeals, tax credits, things like that. So $11 million is our estimate as of February 8th, where that will come out. What I wanted to show you here is that, the good news is you'll see on the, just on assessed value, you'll see the grant list is growing in all the right areas. It is not, it has gone down as a percentage in undeveloped land, which is a good thing, because what does that tell us? It tells us that we're developing our land, particularly in the commercial zones, because as a percentage of the total grant list, there's a slight decrease in residential and a slight increase in commercial. So again, these not dramatic increases or decreases, but in the grand scheme of things, we are going in the right direction. So that is good news for our budget, and we can leverage that grant list growth as we go into the next fiscal year. Unassigned fund balance. So you all know that we have a very healthy fund balance. This was pretty dramatic, as I put it together, to show how far we've come since 2011. We had only about $2 million in our fund reserves. So the blue bar is our total fund balance, which you see has, well, let me go back to 2017, last fiscal year, we have actuals, it was just over $8 million. The line, the black line, shows the percentage, our unassigned fund balance as a percentage of our total operating expenses, townwide, town and Board of Ed together. The Board of Finance has set a policy, a policy that they established a few years back, of where they want that undesigned fund balance to be, where that percentage should be. And that range is a minimum of 5% to a maximum of 10%. So as you can see, at the end of 2017, we are right at the sweet spot, right at around 10%. Looking at our projections for the end of this fiscal year, we're going to have an extremely healthy fund balance, north of 10 million, and we will be at about 12.5% of total expenditures. So we have a lot of health there for a lot of reasons. So by leveraging some of that, we can still have a healthy fund balance, still actually north of the Board of Finance's range. There's a, we have a comfort level there in case there's modifications along the way. And this budget incorporates use of fund balance, but in a way that will not harm the health of our town, the financial health of our town. Last, I want to talk a little bit about capital. There is a capital, a list of capital projects at the end of the budget book. As we've done in past years, the initial capital list is just that, it's a list, those pretty much represent the proposals as they have been submitted. The process will require further evaluation, it's a collaborative effort amongst myself, the town council, and the Board of Finance. We go through the projects, they need to be evaluated, prioritized through that effort. Some projects will be consolidated. One that I can tell off the top of my head, there's multiple requests in there by multiple departments for new vehicles, because we've had issues with the fleet aging throughout town hall. That is an effort that I've specifically asked our Public Works Director to take on, and instead of us looking at each department's vehicle replacement individually, we're going to look at it as a program and as a fleet management effort, and take a comprehensive view of what those vehicles are, how they're used, what the age of the fleet is, what's the best approach of how to do that, how to fund it, over what time period, and even to the extent of what kind of vehicles should we be looking at. We tend to look at police vehicles that are coming offline when they're available and plugging them in is appropriate, we'll continue to do that, but to the extent we have to purchase new vehicles, I suggest that we may want to look towards some kind of a standardization, where we look at something that works for the town, but we can achieve economies of scale. And possibly also look at fuel efficiency. So some capital projects will certainly end up being deferred to future years as we go through the process. The funding sources also have to be refined, so you may see totals in there in terms of bonding, in terms of capital reserves, all that is subject to further modification and revision. The final budget is what will be incorporated into the capital improvement plan for the five years, and that will be included in the final document that goes out to referendum. So again, I just want to make you aware that that capital plan is far from final and will be refined further. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. I know that Council, Board of Finance has a, as they always do, has a series of budget workshops that Chairman Lito and Chairman Manjos have scheduled. So I know there'll be tremendous opportunity in the upcoming weeks to talk further details and for department heads to come in and discuss their individual department budgets, so I know there'll be more than enough time to have those detailed conversations, I look forward to it. In the meantime, again, I want to thank, I want to thank all our town staff, department heads, the volunteers who've helped put this together, our elected appointed officials. Again, thanks to the Board of Ed for your partnership in this regard, and I know the Town Council, Board of Finance will have many, many late nights together as we talk about our budget. And last but not least, thank you to the voters of Monroe, and look forward to hopefully a very successful referendum in April. So thank you.
So we're going to go on with our town council meeting. You can stay or not stay, whatever. Okay, anything about the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes.
It is my intent to abstain from item B of the consent calendar, the request for refunds, as one of the refunds in that is to me for a car that is no longer in service. It's only $25 and change of the $231,243, but for the sake of not voting on my own refund, I will be abstaining. While I do approve the rest of the consent calendar, my vote is to abstain from item B.
In the past, all of us have done that when it was, it's a good example, Mr. Mallor. Okay, anything else in the consent calendar?
Modifications to the minutes. On page four.
Corrections to the minutes.
To the minutes, there's a spelling error. On the section four, it's party, P-A-R-T-Y, as opposed to patty. Patty's not getting paid. Patty. It's also on the, on, um.
Page four, 77.
Page four, bottom of page four, whereas chapter 11, section four, its town is a party to, not patty, or in which the town has an interest. Last line, it's also in the other minutes as well.
Nice catch.
Thanks.
Anything else? Yes, yes, Mrs. Martin?
Yes, I, I do have another, sorry. On page four also is, there's, sorry, page nine, sorry, page four on the regular meeting draft minutes, it's Chris Thornley is Chairman of the Board of Health, not Finance, so if you can correct that for the minutes, just that.
Did you find that, Carol? Okay, anything else? Okay, so Mrs. Martin?
Yeah, I just had a question on the refunds.
Okay.
Perhaps to the, for Selakman. This, notice there's a chunk of money to poor logic. My understanding is that they do real estate, appraisals, and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that if I may, Madam Chairman.
Can we just get, you know, yes, some kind of an explanation?
Certainly. So this is an anomaly that was driven by the federal change to how SALT deductions work, the state and local tax deduction. During this tax season, several taxpayers were looking to pay their local taxes in the current, or now the prior calendar year so that they could take that deduction. The tax bills are, one of the tax bills are typically paid in January, so paid in January 2018. Many people came in in 2017 to pay those bills early, that's perfectly fine, those were taken, those were processed. However, other people were also looking to pay taxes that would be due for the next fiscal year. So tax bills that now would be, now would not come due until July of this year. That is something that we had researched quite a bit, again, with assistance of the town attorney, and actually we had a, our tax collector had an opinion from an expert in the area that we were not legally able to collect that tax early because it had not yet been levied. So as per, now, obviously, some people mailed in payments regardless, there were some situations where double payments were made on the January tax payment, so there were a couple different situations that resulted in people paying more than what they currently owe. And again, a lot of it was due to next fiscal year's taxes that have not been levied yet. So as per standard policy and as per required, as he's required to, the tax collector is refunding all of those taxes. So it's a substantial number, but it is essentially taxes that we're simply going to collect next year.
Yeah, because he contacted me, because he knew I was running this meeting, and he said, you know, make sure if anyone asks, it's like a quarter of a million dollars.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and he said that right to me, and I merely mentioned to Mr. Calo, he said he explained what SALT meant, so.
And is there, there's no procedure in the tax collector's office if they, if they see this, the payments coming in, to not accept them?
Well, certainly, so if someone came to the tax collector's office, they did not accept the payment. There were some that came in that, there were some that wrote in and requested, and they were advised that we could not accept the payment. But again, many payments just arrived, either in the drop, you know, the lock boxes, through the bank, through some other method, and we simply had to refund them.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else on the consent calendar? Otherwise, I'm passing it unanimously, communications are. Okay, we're taking, because we amended it. Okay, so want to do the motion, Mr. Mallor?
Sure, well, it's not so much a motion as I'm just abstaining from the vote.
Okay.
So it's not.
Okay. Okay, so Mrs. Bond's voting in favor of consent calendar.
Everyone.
Everyone else is, so we're all set. Okay.
Haven't done this in four years.
Onto, um, communications, that's pretty much a...
Madam Chairwoman?
Yep.
If I may, if I would, if I could, uh, just recommend, uh, to correct a, a typo, uh, if, if you would be so kind as to entertain a motion to revise, uh, both items I and J under communications to reflect the correct date of February 12th, 2018, for both of those items.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, so we're set on that. All right, so going on to public participation. Anybody, public participation? Nobody? Seeing nobody, then we're going on to appointments. And just to refresh everybody's memory, th- this is the appointment that we tabled because we weren't sure about a, about a whole bunch of things. So, um, we have an opinion when Mr. Kellogg gives his first selectmen's update, and I had called Mrs., um, Martin just to tell her that this is the way that both our Town Attorney and Mr. Kellogg wanted done. In other words, we have to, because we have questions about Maria Verma, not about her, but how the appointment was. So if you'd like to take over, Mrs. Martin?
Sure, um, our first action, I guess, is that I will make a motion to, um, take up the item from the table, the item that we tabled at the last council meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mauer? Any discussion? Okay, so, all voting for this motion passes, uh, seven to zero. Next?
Um, then, uh, Madam Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion for Mrs. Verma, and I have specific language, um, for that amendment. Um, may I enter?
Sure, of course.
Um, Maria Verma, D. 232 Musso Road to the Youth Commission for a term ending 10, 12, 19, in satisfaction of Chapter 6, Section 20 on of the Monroe Town Charter requiring, quote, "a representative of the school system," end quote. This appointment shall be conditional and contingent upon Ms. Verma's remaining and employing of the Monroe Board of Education for the duration of this term.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mauer? Discussion?
Uh, I just ask that the motion be amended to Chapter 4 rather than Chapter 6.
Oh, okay, that works for me, too.
Okay.
Um, Maria Verma moved to Monroe, this, this information was entered two weeks ago, I'd be happy to repeat it.
Sure.
Uh, moved to Monroe in 2012 with her family, she works at the Monroe Board of Education in the Finance Department as an accounts payable specialist since 2016. She volunteers through AYSOR, she's coached both her sons' teams, um, been volunteering her time fundraising for Project War, um, connection to Monroe youth through soccer, and her work at the Monroe Board of Education. We feel and make her a strong contributor to the Youth Commission. And this appointment fills a vacancy created by Jennifer Aguilera.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just, I have a question, you know, we, we struggle all the time with Youth Commission and the charter restrictions. But in regards to Maria Verma, do we know what she does in the education system?
Um, I believe her resume says that she's an accounts payable specialist.
I just not, I, I don't know, does that, would that satisfy charter as far as a representative of her?
Well, I, I think, I, um, yeah, it satisfies, uh, the Town Attorney for his opinion, number one. It satisfies me personally, and this is a young woman who's, works at the school, has interaction with the staff and students, and, um, aside from that, as a parent, is involved in youth activities and stuff, so, uh, the, the charter is very loose, but the interpretation that this is acceptable, I'm very comfortable with, as I believe the first selectman is.
I would also add that based off of the history of this commission and the people who have satisfied that role in the past, when it comes to this commission, that, uh, it goes above and beyond, uh, other people who have served in that capacity, uh, so that I, I, I believe that it satisfies as well.
Okay, anybody else have discussion?
Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Aguilera? I also, I also think that she satisfies it, being that she is taking my spot. Um, when I first started, I wasn't, I wasn't as involved as I was when I ended. Um, I think Maria's got very young kids, so the more, the older her kids are getting, the more involved she is becoming, and I think it's a great asset for her to actually be in the Board of, be in the Board of Ed building. And the last person we had in that slot before me, she was a teacher, so she didn't have the contact, she didn't help anything, she just, she taught, not just...
Gosh.
She taught the kids wonderfully, and she had that contact. So it's, it's, it's had such a wide variety of people.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the struggle with that position, right, is like, where does it start, where does it stop, who do we, you know, you have the Board of Ed, there's so many different people that work there, can a janitor do this, can, who can do it? You know, I mean, is it start, where does it stop? That's all I'm kind of asking is.
I think the fact that she has children, and she's a room mom, and, you know, that's where it starts, I think, is the interaction with the children as well as teachers and personnel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Condon, anything?
Yes, employed by the school, definitely fits the bill, and I think we need to...
Okay. So, all in favor of, uh, putting, uh, so it's a seven to zero vote. Okay, thank you. Going on to action items, uh, A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety, Mr. Rooney?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Obviously, all the departments are working on budgets diligently. I have a few things to report, uh, in regards to EMS. EMS has decided to go with the entire new rig. Moving forward, they will be able to change the chassis out from underneath the body, so that will be a, a cost savings moving forward. Uh, also, police, um, they have two recruits going in for April. Uh, I, I believe they're still in the, uh, the, the process of finding those applicants. Uh, Chief Salvatore's here tonight. Have we found applicants for...
Still in the process.
Still in the process, okay. So we have two spots open and post. Um, the fire, uh, fire study will be spoken about later. Also, in regards to EMS, we will talk about the building committee later as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, going on to B, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning Public Works and Park and Recreation, uh, that's my chair. So, um, no parking rec, meeting due to lack of form, however, during the new business, we will be discussing the 2018-19 Wolf Park fees and voting on a motion concerning those fees. Uh, there's no planning and zoning meeting this week, I asked Mr. Chairman Porter, there just wasn't anything to discuss. At the February 1st meeting, Chairman Porter met with the First Selectmen, the EDC, and the Chamber of Commerce to engage in an open dialogue with Monroe business owners about our town's planning and zoning regulations. And that meeting was determined that the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce would create a committee to propose amendments to address business concerns. And this third thing, um, uh, it's part council, part not, but I think the reporter especially may want to contact, uh, Mrs. Vernaska and get the information from her. The Conservation and Water Resources Commission, one of their responsibilities is using the parks to protect our watershed land, and also to illustrate the importance of protecting our natural environment. On June 24th, there's going to be an opening of a new pollinator at Oak Meadows. Pollinator is how the, the bees and the other little insects pollinate the flowers, et cetera, et cetera. So the area will showcase native plantings that support birds, beneficial insects, and other wildlife, and will support education on low maintenance and plants you can use in your own garden. The Monroe Parks and Rec, uh, Monroe Conservation Commission and Monroe Land Trust are partnering to develop a native plant meadow, and it's going to be June 24th from 1:00 to 3:00 P.M. And, uh, lastly, um, Mrs. Vidisco's Chairman of EDC, uh, the EDC is focusing on a number of initiatives to help build our brands in Fairfield County. Efforts undergo, uh, right this minute, they're going to do town logos, video of Monroe, and Monroe gear. And, uh, that's it for me. So going on to, um, C, Town Council Committee on L&amp;A, Mr. Reed isn't here, is someone else taking his place?
Yes.
Is that a line, Mr. Rooney?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, Mrs. Aguilar.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, Madam Chairman, we, this, uh, this evening at L&amp;A, Legislative and Administrative, we talked about, um, the Second Amendment, I'm going to screw this up, to tie and bond, um, the MS-4 agreement, and I was basic, I was filled in by Mr. Kellogg, and, um, we, we decided to bring that to Town Council tonight, that will be coming to Town Council tonight, as well as the Small Cities Grant Program, uh, contracts will also be coming to Town Council tonight, we approved both of those, too.
Okay, thank you.
Be presented.
So Strategic Planning Committee? Chair of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, we, we met, and, uh, on February 1st, we have elections of office, I was either fortunate or unfortunate to be chair, but, you know, I will be chair, and we have several items to discuss. Uh, first and foremost, we had, uh, followed up on a previous Strategic Committee where we were looking at a municipal space needs assessment under Mr. Babrick, and we have pursued that to, and an RFP has gone out ala, that's Friday, I believe. Uh, so, so that has been completed and sent. So new business, the committee will also be reviewing the five-year capital planning process, so we'll be looking at that and advising. And, uh, we also have a third potential new request that we're looking at, too, is the, uh, review of possible creation of a, um, centralized data repository for town documents, so everybody knows where everything is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, E, EMS Building Committee? I believe that's Mr. Rooney?
Yep. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, as you know, that was the EMS workshop prior, um, which had done a feasibility study, and has now become the EMS Building Committee. Uh, we did meet, we had an election of officers, much like Dennis Condon, I have been elected the chair, fortunately, or unfortunately. Uh, the feasibility study, we found to be very helpful in moving the project forward. Uh, we're currently working on a construction, an RFP for the structure and site planning, um, and the meeting schedule was set, so more to follow. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, First Selectmen's update, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, so, you, I have the, uh, update, uh, hopefully you have it on the dais, uh, it will be added to the electronic version of the packet, uh, if it hasn't already, for those of you who need it. Um, first, a couple, a couple items we already discussed, the proposed budget for the next fiscal year, obviously went through that. The municipal space needs assessment, uh, which Mr. Condon already discussed, uh, as he mentioned, uh, we, we made, some revisions were made to that based on input from our Town Attorney, uh, that was issued by my office on February 2nd. Responses to the RFP are due back by March 22nd, 2018, and the Strategic Planning Committee will remain the oversight body for that process. Um, I wanted to just elaborate a little bit on the, uh, items under the Youth Commission. Uh, you have the memo in front of you, but, uh, there were several questions that were raised, uh, as part of that, um, appointment in the last meeting, and so I wanted to thank our Town Attorney for doing, um, uh, it was a more complex issue than, uh, we perhaps originally thought, in terms of researching, there were a lot of pieces to this. Um, one of the questions that I know was raised was asked of the status of one of the commissioners, um, who had attained the age of 21, where, um, we know the charter has a provision for, uh, individuals under the, uh, one individual under the age of 21, and the assumption was he was filling that role. In the analysis that you have in, in front of you with the Town Attorney's letter, um, he has determined that that charter requirement is actually improper and would not be held up, um, based on state statute and, uh, and the courts, that having a requirement, anything over being 18 years of age is, is not a proper requirement in the charter, so my conclusion is that is something that we should not, we could endeavor to appoint youth to that commission if, if the opportunity presents itself, but it's not a requirement we should, uh, be held to going forward. Um, in regards to the appointment, uh, appointments going forward, when we intend on, uh, having an individual serve one of the other, uh, other roles that are restricted by the charter, i.e. represented with the school district, or represented from the Police Department, et cetera, um, going forward, um, insofar as his analysis showed that because prior appointments were not conditional or specific to that role, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, for us to remove someone if they no longer fill that role. So going forward, appointments when intended to be specific should be very clear and not ambiguous, which is why the revised language that I provided to you for Ms. Verma's appointment. So that is something we should pay attention to going forward. Um, and last but not least, there was some discussion that came up subsequent to the council meeting about whether proxy voting was allowed, this came up in a conversation with the, the Chairwoman of the Youth Commission and myself, and we just clarified with the Town Attorney that, um, our charter does not permit proxy votes. Uh, we do have an individual who serves, uh, as a liaison of the Police Department, which is entirely appropriate, and I would encourage it, however, um, to be clear, she would have to serve as a non-voting member, non-voting liaison, I should say, um, and that the, the voting member, who is the, uh, who is Chief John Salvatore, uh, would have to participate in person or telephonically in order to, uh, cast a vote. So, that is the process, the procedure that is being utilized in my discussion with the chief, however, I think it was important to just clarify that, um, for, for everyone here, and also for the, the Chairwoman, so that they know the, the procedure going forward. So, hopefully that puts us on a framework going forward on the Youth Commission, have these, uh, these ambiguous, uh, questions coming up, I think it'll, it'll help us going forward. Um, last but not least, um, our Health Director, uh, is not currently here, uh, however, she had, uh, asked that I, uh, put together something for the Health, the Monroe Health Department. Uh, it is a proclamation that I'd like to briefly, uh, read and present tonight. Um, it is a proclamation, um, around a, a program called Know Your Numbers. So whereas the Get Healthy Connecticut is a coalition dedicated to preventing and reducing obesity by removing barriers to healthy eating and physical activity through a collaboration of key stakeholders in the community, and whereas Get Healthy Connecticut has identified heart disease and diabetes as a top concern in Monroe that leads to unnecessary disability and premature mortality, and whereas knowledge is the key to reducing the burden of heart disease and diabetes, and whereas many Monroe residents are not aware of key health measures such as blood sugar, blood pressure, and cholesterol, and whereas the Get Healthy Connecticut Program and its number of organizations, including the Monroe Health Department, seek to raise awareness about these issues and way to control disease risk factors, now therefore I, Kenneth M. Kellogg, for a selectmen of Town Monroe, in honor of Get Healthy Connecticut's work to improve the health of residents of Monroe, do hereby proclaim February 2018 as Know Your Numbers Month. I call upon residents, employees, students, visitors, and business owners to take charge of your health and arm yourself with personal health data that can help you make informed decisions, and encourage you to take advantage of resources available at the Get Healthy Connecticut website, including listings of area venues that offer free health screenings, so stated by me today, uh, this day, 12th day of February 2018. And I will present this later to, uh, in person to our Health Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have, then.
Okay, so unfinished business, Chalk Hill Updates? Still on?
Nothing.
Leave, leave nothing? Okay, uh, what about fire study, status report from Mr. Condon?
Fire study, as you know, Patrick O'Hara's in charge of that committee. The, uh, ESCI Consulting Group was in this past weekend, a weekend, and weekend, interviewing the fire departments, looking at the sites, look, assessing our equipment, and interviewing Town Council, Finance Department, et cetera, to kind of see where we are and where we're headed. So I think it's proceeding really well, with a, a good targeted endpoint of midsummer. Patrick, you have something to add?
Yes, of course.
Um, so ESCI was in here Friday and Saturday, they were, uh, it was an intensive day and a half of meeting with all the departments. We're about 120 days away from a report. So once they have everything closed out and all the data that they need, we should be seeing them end of May, beginning of June, with a report to present to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, going on to, uh, new business, A, Second Amendment to the Tie and Bond 2017 MS-4 Agreement, so I normally do the motion, so I'm going to do it. Uh, I make a motion to adopt the following agreement between Second Amendment to Tie and Bond MS-4 Agreement and the Town of Monroe. Seconded by Mr. Condon, discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, so as most of you on council are aware, uh, the MS-4 program is a compliance, uh, project through the State of Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. It's a multi-year, uh, compliance effort that this council prior, uh, in, in prior meetings had authorized, um, the town to proceed with, um, awarding to tie and bond. Uh, there was work that was done, uh, in what was called the First Amendment, uh, which was creation of the Illicit Discharge Detection Elimination Plan, uh, that was approved by council previously. Uh, we are now at the next phase of this, which is the 2017 Annual Report, is literally just another deliverable that requires us to demonstrate, uh, ongoing compliance with the program. Um, this is a relatively short, it's... This is a relatively short, it's only three pages, barely three pages, Second Amendment to that, however, you have all the prior documentation in your package as well for reference. Again, this would allow Tie and Bond simply to proceed with the 2017 Annual Report. Mr. Schatzlein, our town engineer, is here if you have any further questions of a technical nature that he's certainly far more adept being able to answer when we get into the technical aspects of this, but this is, again, part of the program that we had agreed to previously, it's simply the next phase, and this work is currently budgeted within the engineering budget this year, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion, so all in favor of this motion? So passes seven to zero. Going on to the Wolf Park Fee Schedule for 2018, Mr. O'Rourke, you can make a motion?
Madam Chairwoman, I make a motion to send Wolf Park Fee Schedule for 2018 to Town Council. As a further comment outside of the motion, we have vetted this, this fee schedule in our, in our subcommittee earlier tonight, and that's where we are right now.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, by Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Okay, a discussion? Mr. O'Rourke?
Well, go ahead.
You can go, Mrs. Martin?
I would just say, I attended the meeting when they discussed this, and as we look, and I think we talked about two weeks ago, there, there are no changes to this schedule. The change that was made last year was a lowering of the out-of-state, out-of-town business fee, and they decided to keep that lower as it was last year because they thought it was attracting business.
Okay. Any other? Stay the way they are. Any other discussion?
Just clarity, I couldn't make out where the Rotary Pavilion was versus the other one, so I'm assuming it's in here based on the numbers of people, but it's hard, it's not really clear as the winner's a which, but that's just my ignorance.
It's, it's hard, in the copy, it's hard to see. It is, but it's the same.
It was discussed, I'm sure there's rates for, for both.
Yes.
And they're not, you know, you can't bypass those, the rates for the facility, the rates facility.
Exactly.
Okay, any other discussion?
No, pretty much.
Otherwise, all in favor of this motion? Passes seven to zero. Going on to C, C has technically, it's under one contract, but it's really two separate contracts when I do the motion. So it's a 2017 Small Cities Grant Program vendor contracts. So making a motion to approve, adopt, and authorize the first selectman to execute on behalf of the Town of Monroe and the 2017 Small Cities Grant Program vendor contracts. So the first one resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreements and any associated documents by and between Gilbert Co. Lead Inspections LLC for lead-based paint consulting services for the 2017 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. And number two contract resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents by and between Robert Green Associates with title search consulting services for the 2017 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Discussion. So I need a second for this?
I'll make a motion for.
Second of Mr. Condon? Any discussion?
Are you checking him separately?
I can, you want to do it separately, fine, so I need a motion for the first.
Motion for Gilbert.
Okay, motion for the Gilberto, so it's been seconded, discussion on the Gilberto? Anything, Mr. Kellogg?
Certainly, so actually, I can just give you some brief discussion that'll cover both of them. Those of you that are familiar with the Small Cities Grant Program, it's a program to offer 0% interest loans to qualified homeowners for health and safety improvements to their homes. Those projects have all been submitted, vetted, that period is closed out, the consultant, Lisa Lowe and Associates, is now in the process of putting those projects out. Those individual projects will all be bid on separately through a different process, however, there's one overarching, there are two overarching things that have to be done for, for these projects, and one would have to be lead inspection, and the other is title search. And that is something that the Town of Monroe would have to, is, needs to contract directly with those providers to provide those services for the entire 2017 grant period, but again, the costs associated with that would come out of the, out of the grant. So this, that was advertised by the Town of Monroe, but managed by Lisa Lowe and Associates as part of their agreement. Through that process, they identified to, to the lowest qual, lowest qualified, lowest, lowest-cost qualified bidders for each, and so the first one we're discussing right now is Gilberto Lead Inspections, which is for the, the lead testing. And I'll just note that both of these agreements, the templates were provided by the consulting firm, our town attorney reviewed them and made some modifications that were subsequently reviewed, and she was, she had no objections, so both agreements have been reviewed, as you can see, by the letter from Attorney Hayden, excuse me, as well.
Okay, any discussion, other discussion? Otherwise, let's vote the first motion, the Gilberto Lead Inspection Contract, all in favor of this one?
Yeah.
Passes seven to zero. And number two, the Robert Green Associates Title Services, all in favor of this one? So passes seven to zero. Okay. Lastly, we have the 8-24 Municipal Referral Report, I'm sorry.
Do you want to make a motion and a second?
You want me to do this? Okay, I think I did, but we'll do it again. All right, so we want, we need a motion for the second contract, so for the, I'll make a motion to accept the, approve the Robert Green Associates Title Services.
Second.
Fine, so we have a second, and so let's, discussion, we've already done that, so in favor of this motion? Passes seven to zero. Thank you. All right, D, 8-24 Municipal Referral Report from Planning and Zoning Commission, Public Sidewalk and Easement. So that one, a motion to accept the 8-24 Municipal Referral Report from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a favorable recommendation regarding the public sidewalk extension and easement associated with the State of Connecticut roundabout project. That's the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Jesse Mauer. Discussion? Anything?
I mean, I believe everyone's familiar with this project. We, we referred it under statute 8-24 to planning and zoning, they returned a favorable result, so it would certainly be appropriate this time for you to entertain, to do the vote.
Okay, all in favor of this motion? Passes seven to zero. Public participation? Everybody wish to participate?
Just a clarification.
Sure.
Are you doing the authorization to sign the easement as a separate?
I didn't, I believe it's as part of, they're two, two together.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else, public participation? Need a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Second, Terry, Terry Rooney made the motion, seconded by Jennifer Aguilar.
I need a second, do it. I don't need a second.
Okay, thank you very much, it was a lot of fun. Sure, I'd like to do this again.